So I'd like to call to order the special meeting of the Board of Education on Wednesday, December 6th, 7:00 PM, to discuss the budget. I would like to begin with the Pledge of Allegiance if Jay feedback might lead us.
(Pledge of Allegiance) of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
So I have the pleasure of leading the meeting tonight in Houston's absence and I would like to honor the time allotted for communications from the public if anyone here would like to open us up with some comments. All set? All right, well if we're comfortable with that, I'm comfortable to move forward and have our lovely new principal, David Pelling, present the high school budget to us this evening.
Thank you. Okay, thank you and good evening. Tonight first, I'd like to just share a few of the goals from our strategic improvement plan for this year. The first goal for the year is we're going to work very diligently at trying to create a school culture of respect. And we've taken several steps in this regard and we're involving parents and students and faculty in that regard. Secondly, we're working at implementing a very consistent discipline and attendance policy. We want to make sure that we're kind of even across all students and looking to really make sure that students are in class and that we're tracking that very closely. Third, we're working towards creating college and career readiness for all students. So in this, we're trying to address any historically disadvantaged groups and, you know, looking at both ECE, AP participation, making goals for statewide assessments, those kind of measures. Fourth, we're focused from our instructional practice on engagement and inquiry. So what does that look like across a variety of disciplines? Who's doing the work in the classroom? How do we make sure that the learning is authentic and developing professional development and capacity in the building around those ideas? And then lastly, we're looking at implementing really consistent parent communication in the form of newsletters, making sure that faculty of struggling students are communicating, engaging parents and guardians in those conversations. And again, the idea here is kind of to consistently implement these. With these ideas in mind, relative to next year, we're asking for the following budget increases. First, we're asking for a full-time special ed teacher, so that'd be increasing special ed faculty from eight to nine. This would allow us to increase our co-taught classes as well as allow for greater specialization of support for the special ed population. Secondly, we're asking for a .4 business teacher. This is relative to the personal finance graduation requirement and we'd also like to build up that department a little bit, you know, because I think that that's an important career path for all students. Third, we'd like to expand our ELA, English Language Arts by just a .2 and this is to restore one of the cuts from last year and also improve our ECE offerings, more sections and that kind of idea. Fourth, we would like to add a .2 administrator, so we'd bring the assistant principal from a .8 to a 1.0. This is because there's actually a great deal of work to do in the summer. It's everything from making sure that all student schedules are done and balanced correctly, that's teacher loads, all the kind of state law requirements relative to student populations. There's a lot of hiring to do in the summer. I know last summer that took almost a month to do all the hiring. All the handbooks have to be revised. Issues like parking could be resolved in the summer, which I think would be a huge advantage for our front office because processing some 230 parking applications takes, you know, each one has to be personally vetted and gone through and it takes a real amount of time. And then finally reviewing all of the policies, procedures, and protocols. So you want to, sort of from day one, we want all that in place and up to date. So with that idea in mind, we would also ask for one of the secretaries to move from a secretary two to a secretary one, so that we'd have full-time secretaries or administrative support for both assistant principals as they do this work during the summer. And then lastly, we're going to be asking for some textbooks for personal finance and for finance and investment. The remaining part of our budget is largely maintaining the existing faculty, staff programs, and facilities.
So I want to open up to other board members if you have any questions. Okay, Jay?
Thank you, David. I think you addressed a lot of the concerns in community in explaining what you said on next year for the goals. One of the concerns I have is last year when we had three cuts, we cut stop from the high school and we ended up with classes of 25 students in many situations. And therefore, we had students who weren't able to switch into classes if they wanted to adjust their schedule, certain classes they wanted to take, they couldn't take. Or in some situations, if a student was changing levels, they couldn't change to the correct level. You know, some students tried to switch from AP to honors and they had to go all the way down to CP because there wasn't any room in the honors because they all had 25 students. Years ago, we had a problem where we had too many opens for students. We had so many students who didn't take classes and had, you know, two or three opens when they didn't necessarily want the opens. So in a year where we now have funding to bring back some staff in some positions across the district, some new positions, I also want to make sure that we have the correct staff at the high school so we don't end up with a similar situation we started this year.
I think that, you know, certainly there's a slight decrease in enrollment next year, about 60 students. And then with the additional FTEs that we've asked for, that should ameliorate that situation somewhat. We'd also use the data from this year to sort of forecast, you know, what sections we really need to have next year and, you know, in confer- you know, conferring with the guidance department, look at, you know, where there's tight spots and maybe how can we address those with the schedule going forward.
The enrollment was actually a question I had because the enrollment that you've got listed in your summary is different than the overall report and then you just said a number that's even more different. It's a right grammar.
I think the difference is our original enrollment report just carries a number from eighth grade to ninth grade.
Yeah.
And that always decreases over time.
So there, is there a built-in withdrawal of?
Yes.
All right, so that explains that, but I think you just said a different number.
Well, okay, so it's 31 and 11, 42. It's a drop of 42.
All right, all right, and that, that was my assumption was that it's an expectation of dropping. I wanted to thank you for page 92. It made it extremely easy to understand movements, so I really appreciate that kind of information. And everything else that I have is a minor, so that's it.
Anyone else? I just had a couple of questions myself. Would you mind speaking to, on page 92, the tutor intervention is to see that we're maintaining three, so can we confirm that that means we're keeping our math tutor or ELA tutor and the SAC tutor?
Yes.
Excellent, okay, that's good to hear. I had another question for you. It looks like for graduation, you increased the funding on that, so I was just curious if you have some cool ideas in mind.
That's actually, well, I have a lot of cool ideas.
Okay.
But graduation has historically been underfunded, so we've always had to pull money from other accounts in order to cover it, so this is more of an accurate reflection of past practice.
Excellent, glad to see it. No problem. So one question that I like to ask, and it's completely respectful of the process, knowing how much time and effort is put into this. If you could put a wish back into this budget, is there something that is missing here that you would add in if we could?
It's probably more than one, but if I had to pick one thing that I could put into this budget, I would actually put in cameras in the high school.
Security cameras?
I would. I think that it would have a very positive effect on the school climate, on discipline, on attendance, even on achievement, because it's been my experience that cameras kind of changed the tone of the school and it really helps us focus on the work that needs to be done, both the students and the faculty. Not the faculty as much, but helping the students get into class and just, it's a real game changer as far as school climate and culture.
Excellent, so has any assessment been done of that to even have a number to work with?
There is a number and it, the plan right now is in next year's capital submission. It's in the phase two of the security is to do the cameras. With the phase one, as you recall, is actually securing the building. Phase two then is doing security inside the building. That's where the cameras are right now. If we should get the grant that we're still waiting to hear about on the locks, then we move the cameras into that slot.
Excellent, thank you. All right, well, that's it for me. If everyone else is all set, David, thank you for your time. We appreciate the effort that you've put in.
Thank you.
And you're free to stay or if you want. All right, so now I'd like to welcome Dr. Kim Mierman to discuss the people services budget with us.
Yes. I really want to start off by echoing what I know is a lot of my colleagues last time also said around the collaborativeness of the process. And I really want to express appreciation for Dr. Patty Foot really trying to find those great ways of meeting the needs. And on that note, I really want to thank the board as well because you really have been very supportive to a lot of the efforts that I've been trying to work for and one of which is sort of the increase of a social work position back into our mess. Just as an FYI, we're currently interviewing candidates. We actually have a good problem on our hands because we have excellent candidates. We wish to move forward and to a second interview, so we're going to end up with a solid candidacy. But I wanted to, on that note, kind of talk about some of the highlights of this year that we are working on, social worker being top of the list, and being able to enhance what we do for that comprehensive, multi-disciplinary approach for supporting students. The other thing that you supported last year in my budget was to increase our Wilson certified teachers. Wilson is a program that's often recommended for students with dyslexia or other significant reading concerns. And that budget has allowed me to now put into place in this district what is considered a Level 2 certified Wilson teacher who will be here at the high school because Level 2 is where you really need it. It's for students who have mastered the first elements of Wilson and are moving into the second layer. And I'm also increasing a Wilson 1 certified teacher at one of our elementary schools, Roaring Brook. The other thing that last year's budget really afforded me to work on is to continue to enhance the student support model that we have been working very hard on in the high school. You know, anytime when there's new implementation, there's certainly things that you learn as you're implementing that we need to enhance and improve, so we continue to do that. One of the things we are actively supporting is training and professional development for co-teaching teams. So we have some ongoing professional development happening with these teams, so these teachers are learning not only the practices and principles about co-teaching, but we actually have a consultant who comes in and provides them observation and feedback that helps them to kind of grow and improve how they work together as a team. So we're going to continue that work as well. We're also continuing it by bringing forth those work groups. We've just reconvened them again for a mid-year check to see how things are going and to kind of look at the improvements that we want to move forward on. The last year's budget also allowed for an assistive technology coordinator, a stipend position. It actually put in two stipend positions, one for secondary, one for primary. I do not have an elementary one that has stepped forward, but that hasn't stopped us from moving forward. I've been working very closely with the assistive technology coordinator for the middle school and high school and we are working at really cleaning up our systems and how we manage that technology and how we look at assistive technology considerations for students. So we're really trying to beef that up. The other is a transition coordinator that you supported and through a stipend position and she and I are also looking at current practices and then where we need to go. We are looking at really enhancing what we try to do. We're talking about maybe some coursework that we may need to put into place for students and we're also talking about community partnerships with some nonprofit organizations such as Favor that may help us to increase the number of vocational experiences for students. I bring that to your attention because actually a lot of these items feed into what you'll see in this year's budget, so it'll make more sense. Most of this year's budget is really a maintenance budget. Managing, of course, our largest expenses do tend to be out-of-district placement, tuitions, and transportation. You'll see some ups and downs in terms of those. I think you'll see a decrease, for example, in our tuitions, but that is just sort of based on projections, as you know. The other thing that it reflects is an increase of our pre-K program. That increase is really just a .4 FTE for a paraprofessional to move our pre-K program from four days a week to five days a week. That three-year-old program is a half-day program, so it would allow us to run two sessions of cohorts, if you will. That it does allow us for a full week of instruction, which I think will behoove our students with disabilities because I always feel that they need that continuity across five days. But it also will help us, I think, to draw more other peers to the program because there are parents that I think do not look at our program because it's only available for four days as opposed to other programs that are available for five. And in looking at the expensive increase, it's really not that expensive to really increase the program because our teacher already works full-time, so it's just the para-support for her classroom that we would move to power positions from a .8 to a full-time The other big shift that you'll see in this budget, and it's kind of spread throughout, so it's not going to be cleanly in just mine because it does kind of impact the other buildings. But one of the things that I was really pleased to see with Dr. Patty Foot's support is shifting salaries out of the federal grant we receive into the general budget. I think that's an extremely wise move right now. Given both the state and way the federal government, you know, certainly our budgets are working, I myself have been feeling it's a little risky to have a lot of salaries in that grant that could be cut at any given moment. And sometimes these grants get cut at last-minute notice, right? It doesn't even always have a lot of advanced notice. For the most part, these are really partial positions. There are several positions where really maybe part of it was in the grant and part of it was already in the general budget, so some of those positions are just slight movements. And some of those positions, we were able to take out entirely and move into the general budget. It comes to about $178,000 to free up in my grant. That's why I talked about the assistive technology and transition because that federal money can now be put to better resources in those two main areas. And it would allow me the opportunity to actually invest in equipment as well as some software and programs for our district in a much more systemic way. Right now, we really handle assistive technology in a case-by-case situation. And today, I literally this morning had a really exciting conversation with the technology director and our AT coordinator where we were talking about having on hand a stack of assistive technology that we could then go out and test with kids. And we would be able to have a suite of applications and software programs that we could actually trial so that we don't have to go down the path of making a case-by-case decision saying, oh, we need to invest in this. We actually could have the tools ready and be able to test them out right where they need to be. And that is one way that that funding could really be supporting. The other in terms of transition, transition has been working the same way. I would say if there is one area in people services that I really need to spend some energy improving, it is transition planning. Again, we meet individual kid needs, but we have a high volume of students that we actually use out-of-district tuitions and pay for other programs for them because we don't have them here in district. And we also have a number of children that I often feel like the staff is really scrambling to provide the right staffing and resources to what they need for transition. So it's not that I feel that any student is going without what they need for transition planning, but I can clearly see ways where we can be more efficient, more effective, and really systemize the process a lot better. So I'd like to use some of that money from the federal grant to be able to support those things such as, as I mentioned, maybe a partnership with a community-based nonprofit organization where maybe I am able to contract with such an organization to help with spying job sites that would free up staffing to be able to be back into the classroom rather than trying to be on the phone finding workplaces for students. That's just one example, again, how we might be able to leverage those two initiatives. The third way that I would really leverage some of those resources is back to our behavior mental health supports as well. And again, it could look very similar. We do run an alternative learning program here and that funding could help me support them with maybe a more regular consultation, for example, with a clinical social worker or clinical psychiatrist who have a very specific background that might be needed for that program. So I'm just trying to give you some indication of how that money would be potentially spent if it's now freed up through this current budget. I'm all set, thank you.
Thank you very much, that sounds excellent. I'd like to invite board members to ask questions.
I just want to say I commend Kim and Dr. Patty Foot on what they've done with that K grant. It's phenomenal, they hope to market it better too. Any reason why we stopped at 178K? Was there an opportunity to go further?
Well, there always is that opportunity, but then if you do get the allocation in the following year, and I think Kim, Bury selectively and wisely pick things that we can purchase and we would have on hand, for example, equipment and software in case it does, you know, erode or dry up.
Okay.
You can go as deep as you want, but then if you do get the allocation, we have to be creative in how we plan to spend it.
Okay, great. Hopefully we'll be continuing to communicate this to the town as we cascade it.
We will. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Yes, very good.
Yes, and just looking for a little clarity so that I understand, so I'm very excited about the social workers coming back to the district. And if I interpret it correctly, two full-time social workers are coming in splitting between four buildings?
You are correct. So this year, you've afforded me an opportunity to bring in one FTE, correct, starting hopefully, cross our fingers, right after the first of the year. And that person will be, at least between now and June, split between the high school and our preschool program. But in Dr. Patty Foot's proposal to you, she did increase another one FTE where the current plan is to split that person, well, actually, I would reconfigure, so it'd probably be a high school, middle school split and then a Thompson Brook preschool split, if that makes sense to you.
That makes sense, I was going to ask that too, yep. Very excellent, thank you very much. Anyone else? All right, well, thank you very much for presenting that, that was very helpful.
Thank you.
All right, now I'd like to pass the torch to our operations manager, Miles Altus.
Good evening.
Good evening.
You see from the budget there, the present personnel that I have in the department, there's 29 underneath the facilities, which is of course the largest piece of it, 24 custodians across the five, across the six buildings, and then five district maintainers of various trades and specialties. I also have a transportation department, if you will, of one driver who is also a backup courier and then one part-time courier slash driver, sort of handles the morning runs. And then the security department, of course, is the director, Stacy, in security, who provides all the staff oversight and subject matter expert on security issues to the administration and then the 3.5 FTEs that work here at the high school. In a proposed budget for the personnel side of it, asking for a increase of one custodian that would be working the second shift at the middle school and would also cover the central office. This accomplishes two things. Since I've been here, this is my third budget, I've been trying to get an extra custodial help at the high school and the middle school because of the square footage of the schools related to the number of custodians that work there. This gives a .6 to the middle school, which kind of brings them in line with the other schools. Right now, their staff the same as Thompson Brook, but it's a larger school, more facilities in the school, so this brings them in line with the average square footage. Also, at present time, the central office is, shares a custodian with the high school in the first year. So this frees up an extra .2 custodian for the high school, which also sort of brings them down a little bit and gives them a little bit more assistance here at the high school. The second shift custodian also is, will be, we feel would do a little bit better at the central office. The first shift custodian runs into the early morning arrival of the staff and can't be as efficient as we would be on the second shift. I'm also asking for some summer help, summer hire. It used to be summer hire in the district. It stopped, I don't know, three, four years ago, probably three years ago, I think. And it's, when there is not a summer hire, we fall behind on interior work because we have to, there's a 20, what did I say, 21 acres of playing fields out there and they're mowed every day. And it takes three people out there mowing them and weewacking and the like to do that. Looking at the town model, town actually has always had about five or six summer help to help them on their acreage and they're just, they're building a ground, but just the grounds. So by having the summer help, we would be able to pull some of our maintenance people to be able to cover some of the indoor work, some of the indoor work orders that have not been able to accomplish while they're out sitting on a lawnmower, if you will. The rest of the budget, pretty much try to keep it straight and even, there's no increase, there's a slight decrease, I think, but that's more on the personnel side. The rest of it's been reallocating some savings from utilities into the maintenance lines for services and supplies that allows us to play some catch-up and get some things done that's been deferred over the years, some projects that we want to try and improve, investment projects, especially with the, if you will, if we don't get some of the capital budget money in, there's some projects on there we have to get done. We'd like to continue with the LED lighting, for an example, with some of that money if we don't get the capital. That brings us to, like I said, it's pretty much kept it even straight on there, no increase overall on the budget. Depending on your questions.
Thank you. Board members?
Kathy, some minor one really. Noting on page 125, the electric plant operations all decreased and the natural plant, gas plant operations stayed the same, which looks great. I'm just curious if something happening that's more efficient, good job.
Some of it is efficiencies, it's looking back on previous years and averaging it out, going back to that bad winter we had about two years ago, not counting that nice winter we had, I guess that was two years ago, three years ago, the bad winter. Just where I feel we could take a little bit of risk in lowering the electric bills, especially with the LED lightings at Roaring Brook, we expect to have a savings there.
Okay.
So again, just based on past usage, it's, felt natural gas need to keep where it is, that's heat. Electricity, we could take a little bit of risk for it.
Okay, thank you.
And do you mind if I jump in? I can jump on top of that. Miles is correct with the energy savings that we've seen here, but in addition, I don't know if some of the board members recall, the board and the town actually went up together, which was the first time that we've ever done that for electricity supplier. We reaped a huge benefit from that. The board actually took one for the team, right? We went up a little bit from what we could have gone, but it was better for the town overall. So these savings are a portion of that better rate that we are receiving.
We always remember that.
That's right.
Any other board members? The only question that comes to mind, Miles, is this came up on Monday too with Tim Phylon with athletics. We know that scoreboards aren't functioning properly in the middle school in Thompson Brook, is that something that's addressed or is that a capital budget issue that?
Replacing them is a capital budget that falls under Tim Phylon. I know the one in Thompson Brook, for instance, it's a controller, we can't fix it, so Tim's getting that fixed. The middle school, I'm not aware of any, anything with that, so he may have that.
Okay. All right, and I have to apologize to Kim, so let me ask you first, but I'm going to go back to you because I didn't mean to forget, I put a little star here. If you could make a wish, Miles, to add something back in, what would it be?
I don't think, given the resource of time, I think the budget's sufficient for what we can execute.
Okay.
Because we have increased the lines that I use on a day-to-day basis.
I appreciate that, thank you. So if you don't mind me going back to Kim, I apologize for missing that opportunity with you. with you.
I honestly don't really have anything I would add at this point, I really feel that this budget adequately resources things that I need to have resourced, so I'm pleased.
All right, I didn't want to go without asking you, I apologize.
Thank you.
Thank you, Miles. So now, we can go to Maggie Dreher, who can discuss food services or nutritional services, it's better, right?
Thank you, I appreciate that. Thank you, it's nice to see you all this evening. So just a quick little roundup, and I'll get into the budget. Our, can you hear me? Our school districts, along with Canton and Region 10, the three districts in the shared services consortium, were part of a pilot program, Put Local on Your Tray. And I had a meeting last week, and this is a program with the state, and it includes Hartford, Old Saybrook, and Nogatuck, so they were looking for areas with different demographics. And the point of the pilot is to try to find ways to, obviously, put more local on your tray, to find ways to connect with the local farmer, and what are the obstacles of procurement regulations and things like that. So we had our first meeting last week, so I'm really hopeful to make some connections with local farmers and really try to increase the local produce that we have. You see a lot of fresh produce, and a lot of it is through the Department of Defense grant funds that we receive, and some of that is local, but of course, we're in New England, so during the winter, some things come from California. But, and we do work with Hayward Orchards, which is located in Harmington, and we get apples and peaches and pears from them, but I would love to be able to increase what we get locally. So that's, that's a focus right now. And then, I worked closely with Heather and the other two business officials in the other two districts for the last couple of months of last school year, really trying to find ways to utilize this concept. So we're part of a purchasing cooperative, which helps with our purchasing food, and but we tried to look past that, like what else can we do? We have this concept, this, now we're going into our fifth year, so we really want to utilize it the best we, we can. So some of the things we focused on was sharing staff. All three districts struggled with being fully staffed last year. The middle school here worked from, there's a whole second half of the year, one short. And then, if you have people calling in sick, on top of being short anyway, that really becomes a challenge. And we, I would have to say, we have some great staff and great principals who have been known to get behind the serving line and serve the students. And Mike Rinquist and Jess Janini have done that, and the kids love to see them there. And that's been a help to us, but of course, we can't expect our principals to be serving lunch. So what we've done is, we've created, it's an employee volunteer form, is what we call it, and so we ask all the employees at the beginning of the year whether they would be open to, if maybe there's a day off in Canton, but we have school in Avon, if they'd be willing to work in another district. So they would get a $25 stipend and mileage from their home school. So that's been helpful, and we also created a permanent floater position. So this position, we had, the home base was Cherry Brook Elementary School in Canton, who happened to be short-staffed at the time. But this person would work every day, but could work at any school in any of the three districts. And that was really helpful. Unfortunately, I have to tell you that she resigned, so that is an opening right now, and we're hoping to fill that. And it was a personal reason she left, it was not based on the job, so, but it was, it was really working out very well, so we're hoping to fill that again. Also, sharing inventory, although each school orders their own food, and of course, you know, Avon pays for Avon's food and Canton pays. At the end of the year, you may find an abundance of inventory that you, you really want to end the school year with your freezers and your refrigerators basically empty. So what we've done is, we'll meet usually in May, and with all the managers in all three districts, and basically plan June's menu on what do you have in your freezer. And then, it could be, well, I've got whatever, and I'm going to let Avon have it, but I'm from Canton or I'm from Region 10, and basically, then we would bill out, you know. And that worked out great, so we really got to be very low in our inventory at the end of the year, which is exactly what you want. And it also helped the managers meeting together, as well as helping, it was great for them, they really enjoyed networking with the other managers in the other districts. So to add to that, we did shared training. So in August, we held, I held a training for all the staff in all three districts. And that was great for the employees, not only the managers, but all the employees to network. And we did the professional development in-house, I provided some of it. One of my employees in Region 10 is a serve-safe proctor, so she was able to provide some safe food and sanitation training to the staff, so we tried to utilize some of the skills that we had in-house already. So you can see our professional development line has gone down a little bit, so that's been very helpful. And, so, those were some of the things we worked on together. The other thing we wanted to focus on was marketing the program. So we started a new meal plan program, it's called Nutrislice, and this is a program, it's a menu where you can access it through each of the district's websites, but it's also an app that you can put on your phone. So when I've met with students before, you know, they would say to me, well, I want to know what's for lunch, and I would say, well, it's on the website. They'd say, well, we don't go to the website, you know, I'm, I'm old, obviously. So it's something that the students and the parents can put right on their phone, and if you hover over the day, there's nutritional information, and we're also adding actual photograph pictures of the actual meals that we serve. We didn't want to use stock pictures, we wanted to actually look, you know, we're really proud that the staff is cooking from scratch, so we want the parents to really see what it looks like. So, and that, because of the shared services, when we met with the reps from Nutrislice, they set us up as an entity, but they only charted us once, and then minimally, so we really saved about $3,000 on the initial setup, instead of if we were three separate districts. So that was a great savings for us at the shared services. So I think that was great progress there. Okay, so if we get into the budget, which we had a very successful year last year financially also, and, and we're in a, a good, solid place, and I'm expecting the same thing for this year, but we're looking at the state funds, we did not put them in, just, right now, they're still there, they've been reduced minimally, like the 10 cents per meal that we receive for the healthy foods is about nine cents right now, so it's been minimal, but we just, you just don't know, we're afraid to kind of count on that, so we didn't put it in. And, other than that, it, it's pretty much just your standard increases in food cost and your standard increases in labor and benefits. As you can see, the professional development for the next school year, we've gone way down because we're really going to try to provide all that training in-house. One of the things I wanted to have you take a look at was the contracted services line. So that's the shared services, so that's myself, my administrative assistant, it could be conferences or things like that, specifically to myself and my administrative assistant. And one of the changes this year, well, you'll see a jump, is when this began, the business managers who created this program, it was divided evenly by thirds. So Canton is a much smaller district, so as we got to go through this, Canton was struggling more, so it's now set up based on enrollment. We thought that was a little fairer across the board, Heather, I don't know if you want to speak on that a little bit, so you'll see that. And then the other thing we're working towards, one of the things that we did find while meeting, for myself, sometimes it's hard to be everywhere I need to be and handle the, the work at the schools as well as the administrative work in the office. So I have an administrative assistant whose responsibilities are basically secretarial, so we talk and are moving towards transitioning that position to more of an assistant to the director position, which would have more of a food service or nutrition-based responsibility that could be helpful to me, maybe with some of the training or some of the paperwork, the production records, things like that, that my secretary may not have the knowledge for. So you see the change in the, in the contracted services line. But I really expect to move forward if there's no huge surprises in a positive way this school year. We have a solid fund balance, so if we do have, in fact, today, unfortunately, I got a call, we have a $6,000 repair at Pine Grove, so these things do happen when you have older equipment, but I think we're in a pretty stable position to be able to handle anything that might come up.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
So any board members that have questions? I would just ask for clarity, you do have an independent budget from the school budget, that you have your own account?
It is, it's a self-supporting budget. Right now, and Heather, you can talk about how the budget is in Avon a little bit more, you have a better handle than I do, because it's, it's in with the town.
So, fair question. The food service program here, nutrition services program is self-sustaining and lives in its own fund, so it's Fund 4, if you wanted to look through the financial statements here. The only strange thing that I think we've mentioned a few times is that somehow during the history of the town of Avon, they developed a cash pool over on the town side as far as the actual cash goes, the bank account, and they pulled in the nutrition services cash fund into this cash pool. Well, it's really not the best way to be handling it, because it is supposed to be an enterprise account and it's supposed to be handled by itself, which, we've been trying to fix this, and hopefully, as soon as we receive this year's audit, we will be able to move forward with the bank account that we actually opened in the spring. So it is all by itself, self-sustaining, it has a business plan now, so.
Excellent, that's what I thought, the last sentence, I thought that was speaking to that.
Correct.
I wasn't sure, okay, thank you. If I could put a plug in for the Nutrislice, I just discovered it last week.
I do.
And it's because I mentioned, I can't find the school menu anywhere, and then board members and Jean Anne pointed out, oh, there's an app. So if we could maybe put some type of link on the website for those of us that still go to the website to find it.
There is, if you look at the menu.
As I looked up lunch menu, what do I look under? Does I look at the lunch menu? I missed it, okay, I apologize then, it's me.
And then, also there, even from your phone, from there, you can link to the free and reduced applications and information like that.
All right, then I will look closer, but I love it, I think it works really well, and I saw that it was supposed to have pictures, and I was like, where are the pictures?
There are more to it, there are many more to it.
Yes, I saw that, I'm like, I'm not touching that.
Have you rated the meal?
Yeah, no, I'm not touching that.
Well, you know what's interesting with the rating the meal, because I was a little nervous about that. I believe we're the only ones who can see it, so it's not like it's out there in social media. Because it is subjective, but I welcome feedback.
So based on sales, it looks like they're going up, so does that mean students are actually buying fresh food?
Sales are going well, they're, you know, I was just speaking to Heather, I was at one of the elementary schools observing, and I was helping serve, and I was amazed at all the little ones, they were taking fruits and vegetables by the handfuls, and without being asked, and they're just, that's just the way it is now. So when all these new regulations came in and you had high school students saying, I'm not taking a fruit and vegetable and you can't make me, they've graduated. So now, it's like, this is the way it is, I'm not saying you don't get a, you know, a student once oil doesn't want to take that, I only say there's such a variety, there has to be something that you like. And most of the time, we really don't get pushback, but the little ones, great, they were just taking the fruit and vegetables, and Heather was even saying, her daughter took too many, so.
That's a good problem. So I don't know that I can extend my question to you then, can I give you the opportunity to put a wish in there, because you operate on your own, so I don't really think...
I, you know what, and it pleases me to be able to say this, that we are in a very good position. So we do have some equipment issues, like I stated, with the older equipment that were slowly ripped, there's a few things at, Rearing, not Rearing Brook, yes, Rearing Brook. So we weren't able to replace the walk-in, but that becomes a much bigger issue, because it's built into the walls and there's a best, so we bought one reach-in refrigerator, so we're finding it's not quite enough, but we have the funds to, to buy another reach-in. And then, at Thompson Brook, we have a tabletop cooler that's not working, and that was sort of limping along, so now we're in the position that I can start to replace these things, and it's a very nice place to be.
Excellent, I know that Kathy has a question for you.
First of all, Maggie, I just want to say thank you, this is a breath of fresh air after years of hearing, you know, a little bit of struggle and whatnot, but, so this is good to hear. I had a question about PD, I think you've answered it, you're saying it's covered in-house, because it's gone to zero, so I just want to make sure that that was...
I just thought, and I, I just felt it supports the staff and it helps them build their self-esteem and their leadership abilities, so if I find that I have strengths, we had some cashier training, so we had one of our cashier, shears who does a really good job, she did the cashier training, so I'm trying to use the strengths that we have, and of course, I, I provide a lot of the regulation piece and things like that.
Oh, great, thank you, I appreciate it.
You're welcome.
Anyone else? All right, well, I think that completes this table's section for the evening. Should I dismiss Jean Anne, or?
Sure.
It's up to you, if you'd like to...
Thank you so much, thank you.
Thank you very much.
No, we're going to sit in the hot car, we're in the hot seat, I think, all the time.
The same old hot seat as ever.
Yes, right.
Thank you all.
Thank you.
Maggie, thank you for handling the audit comment too, back together, thank you.
So now, we'll look to our right for Central Office to present their budget, so Dr. Nestler Rusak.
Good evening. For my budget next year, we're looking to obviously continue our curriculum review and revisions. So the areas that we will, our goal is to complete next year are business. You may recall, I shared that we started business in November, but we have quite a bit of work in that area to do. In the spring, we will begin technology education, and that would be the middle school and high school that we will be working on. And then, also, the library media curriculum will be revised, and we'll also pull in, if the position is approved, for the STEM teacher and create the curriculum, along with the library media specialist curriculum at that same time. Within the library media curriculum, we will also define K-12, what do our research skills look like, because we see some inconsistency in how those are taught across the grade levels, so how does that build as students increase their capacity for researching as they advance through the grades? And we'll also look at the technology standards, the international technology standards were recently revised and released, so we'll look at those again, K-12 through this curriculum, and where, for example, do we teach keyboarding, where do we teach PowerPoint, and whatever they define in there, so that we have a guaranteed experience for students and not, if you happen to get this one particular teacher, you get this one skill, so we want to do that much more consistently. As you heard from the elementary principals the other evening, and then the secondary ones, maker spaces is an area that we will focus on as part of this curriculum review and revision, and we'll really begin to reimagine, what do our library media centers look like? They'll still continue to be a place to access information, but we also want to provide the tools and materials that really encourage that inquiry into science, engineering, and technology. How do we advance our students', you know, problem-solving skills, creativity, in support of the curriculum that we teach? So in this space, students will be able to either independently or collaboratively with others, you know, experiment with things, design, invent, create, so that will be the work of that particular group. Our social studies curriculum, K-6, we embedded into our language arts, which we think is a very effective way to do it. When we wrote the English language arts curriculum and embedded the social studies, the social studies standards had not been revised yet, so we will spend a little time just making sure that we're aligned with the new standards in the K-6 and address any area that we need. And the last area that we will look at is we're exploring working... And the last area that we will look at is we're exploring working with Confucius Institute for the Chinese curriculum, because that is the one curriculum that is not done in the same format as every other curriculum here in the district. And we've worked with other, you know, groups on the outsides, you might recall, we've worked with Jane Doe No More, creating that curriculum that they're using to work with the state now. So this would just be one of, you know, another example of a relationship like that. We also have found, while they have the curriculum, what happens is the Chinese teachers are with us for only two, maximum three years. So as they change, especially at the high school level, it's been a little bit difficult to get the new one up to speed. While she's fabulous, if we had, I think, everything in one place, it would allow our department coordinator to provide that support also for that program. As I mentioned, the goal is really to complete these curriculum reviews and revisions next year. That means, at that point, all of the curriculums would have gone through their initial review. And as you may recall, when we started this work initially, the Curriculum Professional Development Council agreed that we would use understanding by design for all curriculums as we wrote those, and we promised that everybody would have the opportunity to get training in that, it wouldn't be kind of a one-and-done training. So if all goes as planned, this should be done next year, which would mean that we are done with the consultant, because now through the curriculum work and this training, every teacher has been involved in that work. They understand how to unpack the standards, they understand how to write the curriculum, the assessments. It's not saying that we don't need some help necessarily in writing certain parts of an assessment or training in something, but that we would just bring in individual people or send some of our folks out for training. So as we move into that next review and revision process, and we started it last year with math, it was an internal evaluation, not involving a consultant at all, because now we have the skills and knowledge to do that internally, and we'll do the same with English language arts this year. Another change in the teaching and learning area, which my colleagues mentioned the other night, they sold a lot of my thunder the other evening, I think I need to go first next year. We have a teacher on special assignment, which has been just a fabulous position in terms of that ongoing embedded professional development. So the first two years, if you recall, it was focused on English language arts with Dr. Jim Fuller in that position, providing that support. Then it was identified that we really needed some support in that elementary math. Teachers had had maybe one math class in college, we were asking them to take the content much deeper, and they said, you know, Donna, we need some help in that area. So the position then kind of morphed, so to speak, that it became a strong focus on math and how to deepen people's skills and knowledge, how to do centers in the classroom. And then that position added on science as we created our new K-6 science units. So we're at the point right now that that is really solid. Again, there's always that continuous improvement, but we can do that more on a need basis as opposed to kind of that really strong focus. So the area that was focused next, or determined that should be the next area of focus by teachers and building administrators, along with myself and the program director, is really that enrichment for all. And we started that work a couple of years ago with the enrichment for all. We trained the program director and the teacher on special assignment in Rinzoli's program. And Mike mentioned the other night about the enrichment clusters at Thompson Brook. Of that enrichment for all, we're moving that down to Pine Grove and Roaringbrook this year. But the topic and the conversations were around, you know, that's the next area of how do we provide that support for teachers so they can start doing that naturally in the classrooms over time, and it's not just an event a couple of times over the course of the year. So the position will be structured just like the math-science coach that we have right now. That person does professional development for whole faculties, she does modeling, co-teaching, individual coaching, would assist with extension activities as we write, you know, and enhance our units of study, and would assist with the enrichment clusters that we are now moving out fully, K-6. So really, just a new change in focus area in that position, no change in funding or staffing. This person I would also include in that library STEM work also, that curriculum work, because I think that would be a beautiful extension of that work and support of that work for our classroom teachers. In terms of professional development, really all of my areas of professional development, that's kind of the big umbrella, Capturing Kids' Hearts, we've been doing for a number of years. There is one training, budgeted for this year, we do that with our new teacher training. And then we have close to everyone in the district trained right now, I believe we have about 50 folks left in that neighborhood, and we involve those folks with our new teachers as we do that training. Additionally, we have one consultation in there. The consultant comes in usually for three days, works with our process champions, those are the people that have had that second level of training in all of the buildings to continue the work within the buildings and support their colleagues. And then he also works with the administrators individually, and we have convinced him to do some group work of our administrators on top, gratis, and the principals have all reported that that's very helpful for them individually to have conversations about how do I work on culture in my building, and then us as a group of how do we look at that district-wide. When we began the implementation of Capturing Kids' Hearts, it really provided us with that much-needed framework, because we were really working to move the district from five buildings that worked in isolation and kind of were independent agents to all of us working collaboratively. And this really allowed us to define, how are we going to interact and work with one another? Adult-to-student, adult-to-adult. So I think the training has really helped to provide that foundation. But as with any change, obviously it takes time for it to take hold and gain that traction. We have very strong traction at Pine Grove. It was recognized last year as a Capturing Kid Heart National School of Distinction. We received notice today that it has been nominated again for a second year. So they will go through that process again. Thompson Brook is another school that it is really becoming embedded in. If you walk in the building, you'll see the social contracts, the teachers in the hall, the interactions with the students. And actually, one of our teachers there was tapped by Captured Kids' Hearts and has become one of their trainers in the summer because of what they saw there. Our other three buildings are at different places, and I think they're along that different continuum of implementation, really because we've had a lot of leadership changes within those buildings. So the leaders have all been trained in it, but how do we leverage the consultant work, their colleagues, to help them really move that work forward? So our next step in that area really is how do we continue to strengthen that framework? You know, there's no perfect framework, but how now that we have that framework in place, do we take other pieces or strategies and embed them in? So for example, the responsive classroom, the first six days of school, you know, is a very strong piece. So Pine Grove, for example, has taken the first six days of school and morphed a little bit to fit in with that Capturing Kids' Heart framework as they introduce kids to the first six days of school. When we look at PBIS, another model similar to Capturing Kids' Hearts, we've taken a few of those pieces where you model and demonstrate the rules. So at different buildings, those rules are in place through Capturing Kids' Hearts, but the PBIS piece of modeling is done through that. So how do we blend those together nicely? So I think the major piece we'll continue to work on is implementation for those, both internally with the consultant. We are also starting welcoming walkthroughs this year, where a group will be coming, be put together, that will walk through a building using a rubric to see how welcoming are our schools and where do we need to improve. So that we will begin initiating this year to see, you know, are our schools welcoming? Do we show respect in all of the other pieces that are in there? Also, within that budget line, we are required as a district, under state law, to provide a minimum of 18 hours of professional development. So there's funding in there that allow us to bring individuals in to provide professional development based on either district or school areas of focus. So for example, Dave just mentioned at the high school, they're looking at engagement in employees, so we might bring someone in for some of the PD time to work with the staff on that. Then we also send some of our staff to workshops and conferences. We feel strongly about that shared leadership, so they will go out and then come back and do some of the training within the district for their colleagues. So for example, we have a group that will be doing a math workshop coming up in December, and then we will be tapping those folks and supporting them to do some of the professional development for their colleagues in January, like a two-hour training on strategies that they're bringing back from that math workshop. So I think that concludes my presentation. Oh, I'm sorry, I forgot the team. Team are, is the program that does the new teachers, and we're required to provide mentors and the team training. It is fully budgeted, excuse me, in the 18, 19-year budget, which is a good thing because the state just pulled back all of the funding, recognizing and hearing that was coming. Last year, I did put all of that funding in the 17, 18 budget, so it's not new in 18, 19, but it is a cost that we will be incurring now at the district level. And that naturally concludes my part.
All right, thank you. Open it to board members? Okay, Jay?
So a question I ask over here, but I just want to make sure, district-wide as opposed to asking each school, that we do have textbooks that teachers are requesting. I know this year, from experience, there are some classes at high school that don't have textbooks, but I know especially in the world language and science, in the past we provided workbooks for students, and this year they have to purchase them and sometimes buy used ones because they're expensive. But I'm always shocked because we have had a surplus and reached out to the schools saying, does anything you want to free buy? And I don't know how we end up in situations every year where certain teachers are not provided with the textbooks or workbooks that they need for the students.
Any textbook requests since my time here has gone through CPDC and has been purchased. I know at the beginning of this year with one of the new AP courses, there was a delay in the book coming, but we did order the extra books. Actually, they didn't budget for it this year, they budgeted for it next year and started the course this year. So we did fund that this year for them. In terms of workbooks, we have been pretty clear that we don't use, you know, workbooks, we have textbooks, we have other sources there, but we're really pushing the teachers to do more of that inquiry-based learning and project-based, not, you know, the workbooks and the worksheets. So, you know, if that's happening, then that's something I would need to look in, with the exception of the business course, personal finance, I'm sorry, the accounting course, because they have not gone through the review. But the other courses, we have created other units of studies that were supposed to eliminate the need for the workbooks, the consumables.
Anyone else?
I just have to ask, my curiosity is getting the best of me. What is a welcoming walkthrough?
Would you like to be part of the committee?
Yeah, that was my second part of the question. Who's doing the walking through?
Who created it? It's coming through, do you want to speak, because I know that you made the initial contact for us, Kim?
Yeah, it's, actually, it's a protocol and a process that's been...
Say hi to the camera, Jeff.
In collaboration with the State Department of Education, the State Education Resource Center, and CREC, about, probably almost 10 years ago now, there was a process and a protocol created that would assess schools for how welcoming they are. So the process is that there would be a stakeholder group put together of parents, teachers, and community members, and there would be a facilitator that comes in and walks them through what the protocol is looking for, what the rubric is measuring. The team would then go out into the school and actually look for evidence of welcoming aspects of a school, for example, signage. You know, I know myself, having been in many schools across the state, it's sometimes very difficult to find your place from one room to another, so it would be kind of an indicator of welcoming-ness if I know how to find my way around the building, that's just one small sample. And then they, when they come back, they debrief what they learned, and they set forth recommendations to the school to say, hey, it might help improve welcoming aspects if, and then they would leave that recommendation with the principal.
So it's something that the state is requiring us to do?
No, it is not required.
It's a choice.
It feels artificial.
It's actually something we talked about back in July as part of our support in increasing our family engagement. So I pursued the contact for the principals, and three of our schools are going to participate in using this process to kind of enhance what they do.
I can tell you, I have participated in it as an outsider, but for a CREC school. And it was really, the discussion, walking through the school with that lens is very, very interesting.
Oh, all right.
And the group discussion, because of having the outside people plus the school people that really know what's there.
And does it, what do you do outside of school hours, I assume?
No, during school.
No, so you can really see.
So you can really see what's going on.
And it really is effective?
Yeah.
All right.
It doesn't feel artificial, having done them, it doesn't feel.
It's like a two or three-hour thing, it's not like it's a all-day type exercise.
It sounds like it's a choice, so some of the buildings chose to do this and some...
Yeah, we opened up, that was a choice, and the three of our schools took the opportunity to pursue it.
The other two wanted a year, because they're both new principals, which was fair. So we'll revisit that with them for next year after they've had a year kind of to get their building in order.
You should try, I would suggest that board members try to do one, just to see what it is.
Interesting, yeah. So will you provide us with the dates and times when that?
I will pass that communication along to the principals happily.
Okay, excellent. Any other questions by board members? So Donna, I'll extend you, the wish question, is there anything in this budget that if you could put something in that you would like to see added?
No, I think this really covers the work that we have, you know, if we could maintain this, because I know mine took kind of a dive last year or this year in the budget. But also, I think it's fair, because when you're doing professional development and trainings, there's so, only so much you can do and put it in practice. Otherwise, you're just getting a lot of it, but you don't have time to put it in practice, reflect on it, reach out to somebody else again. So I think if we just keep systematically putting things in and available for folks, we're in a very good place.
Great, thank you.
Thank you for asking.
All right, so Jean Anne, who is going next?
I'm going next, and then it goes right over to Heather.
Okay.
You have to tell us exactly where we're going.
So we're going to page 129, and then the category says, general administration.
General administration.
So I want to begin by saying that I put in three, well, really, two positions and a board clerk, and I would like to speak to those. So I think I told, you were all there when I was interviewed, and I said, well, you know, I'll offer you my input based on my prior experience if I really think that something is needed. And I truly think a director of human resources for an organization that employs 470 people is necessary. And right now, that is shared, that responsibility is really shared by many people. Heather is very involved in it, I'm very involved in it, the building principals are very involved in it, there's a secretary. So my vision is, and my experience has been, that screening and hiring should be centralized, that job descriptions should be reviewed. You have a book with job descriptions, they should be reviewed in the Americans with Disabilities format, should be followed and start to be updated. Title IX and sexual harassment training should be documented and monitored for all mandatory reporters and administrators. For example, one of the questions I asked Donna was, so when was the last time that everyone had sexual harassment training? And what was your answer?
In what district?
Can we call that sexual harassment prevention?
Well, yeah, but the law, the law is really, there is a law, and it says for all administrators, they have to be trained. Usually, it's every two years, I think the law has become a little more flexible. So we just, all the certified administrators and anyone that supervises anyone was there. Title IX, we didn't have Title IX officers in our, we had actually two for the entire district. Best practice is you have two in each building and two at the central office, because Title IX applies not only to students but also to employees. We don't have the postings up, so we're in the process of doing that. So there are a lot of things that really come under human resources that I think, I know will be improved. And really, it is a specialty. So 470 people, I think that, well, we have 470 on the books, but let's, you know, we also have people that come and go, and we're always appointing. Things like equal employment opportunity, you know, wording, Title IX and Section 504 should really be on all of our publications. I almost was going to... I almost was going to put it in the budget book, because that's something that really should be even in your budget book, because it's something, a publication that you put on your website. When I sat down with Heather to put this in the budget, my feeling is you're really best served by someone who has an O92 certification. In other words, someone who's a certified administrator. However, it should not be in the administrators bargaining with. The reason I would advocate for someone with an O92 certification is because lion's share of the people that you employ are certified. Understanding certification, especially as it is evolving now with some relaxed rules, is really important when you're hiring. So that's something I feel very strongly about, and I think we just move this district forward and protect the district. The most important thing is to protect students and staff. The next thing is the receptionist registrar. So one of my observations has been that the administrative assistant, who is really the first point of contact behind those windows, the little windows at the central office, is there to greet everyone. So answer the telephone. To be very honest with you, I do most of my own work. Things that I really had envisioned doing, like having an electronic newsletter by October, gone. Changing the website, updating the website to the new format, and keeping that fresh and accurate, hasn't happened. And I feel very frustrated about that, to be very honest with you. But in a typical month, for example, because I just wanted to give a snapshot, I know that someone had written a question to the budget website and, you know, only agreed with their HR position and said, "Well, you know, you register students only once," or what have you. So I just want to go through this. So in August, which you would expect, I didn't even go back to July, but in August, there were a total of 123 registrations, okay? Now, we want this person to answer the phone, do the superintendent's work, do all of these other things, which really aren't getting done, and also be the greeter and do the registration. Thirty-seven people showed up just for changes of address, and then visitors and vendors totaled 196, just in August. So September, as you would expect, the registrations go down, so it was 20. Change of address, another 20 people, and 149 visitors and vendors. In October, it was 23 registrations, change of address dropped to eight, but 150 visitors and vendors. November, 16 total registrations, change of address 16, visitors and vendors 125. I really think it'll do a disservice to your next superintendent not to have an administrative assistant who can assist with the charge or whatever direction, wherever that person is taking the district, because public relations, I think, is number one from the superintendent's office. And I, I think this school district is a phenomenal district, but has to market itself far better than we have them. And, you know, I do feel badly about that, because I really thought, "Oh, I can come in and do it," and it's, it's very hard. The next thing is the board clerk. I do believe that you had a board clerk, I think that was cut. Well, that's another thing that the administrative assistant does. So these little tapes, which I'm not always very good about turning off at the right time, and I need to learn that skill, because, for example, mistakenly, on Monday, it was on and what have you, during executive session, so I had to take care of that. I thought it was turned off, but apparently, it's a little tricky. And at any rate, you really need someone, I think, to be at your board meeting, physically present at your board meeting, because I have to tell you, Mrs. Aroli, she catches things that I don't catch and that, you know, the administrative assistant doesn't catch. And your minutes are, you know, she's always concerned, and rightfully so, that the sentences are written properly and correctly, and if you're answering the phone, registering, you have the headset on to listen to this, you put it on pause. So, you know, first you have to do, and I did it the other day, and to tell you the truth, I was trying to listen to it, the, the volume wasn't the greatest, and then trying to figure it out. And if you notice, I developed cheat sheets, so we try to take notes, and we give the notes to the secretary as well, or the administrative assistant. But it's not, it's not efficient, it's not effective.
And we're not always on time.
Well, and I was trying to think of a good way to say that. Legally, you have to have your motions posted by, within 48 hours, and then you do your minutes within seven days. Sometimes those timelines have not been met, even prior, like when I came to the August meeting, they really weren't met. That's not a good thing, because, you know, you would be subject to a FOIA, Freedom of Information Act complaint, and they would ask, they would tell you, direct you to remediate the situation. So I think for consistency purposes, it's really important. And, you know, I think we put it in for maybe 19 or 20 hours a week, year-round, because I do think that you should have the same person at your standing committee meetings. I think the agendas should all be funneled through one person, and I just think you can run, you can run the system better, you can run the system better. In addition to that, I also put in money for the strategic plan. I put in $30,000. I was part of three strategic plans in the district that I was in, that were under my tenure there, but I was actually part of probably seven strategic plans. And in every single plan, we used an external facilitator. And I think you get what you pay for, okay? I don't know how you've been monitoring your strategic plan, but it goes well beyond writing your mission, writing your vision, and your belief statements. You should have action steps, and you should have your stakeholders, which typically, in a district this size, you would probably want 25 to 30 stakeholders, which would be a combination of your, your staff, your board, your elected officials, and parents, and students. We always had high school students on our strategic plan. We used three full days with a facilitator and did it off-site, so that people didn't have interruptions, and there's a lot of work to do in between. So once, when you, you can use this format where you develop a strategic plan and you get it written, you get the mission, vision, beliefs, all done in those three days, and then you come back for an additional two days. So you're talking five full days to do a comprehensive strategic plan, and you start working on your action steps. And you usually assign that to groups, and people work between the three-day, you know, the end of the three days, and then the next two days that you have later in the year. But anyhow, I'm bringing this up because that is going to really set the blueprint for what you do over the next five years. And ideally, a strategic plan should be updated probably in the third or fourth year. So it's always fresh and it's always current. I believe your strategic plan was approved back in 2012, and it's not really clear to me what all the action steps are and what kind of data you've collected to ensure that you're meeting those action steps or that you're changing them. So I do think that that's a big responsibility for the administrative assistant in working with the superintendent, because the first year that you do it, you have those five days off-site, you need to get all the letters out to your invitees, there's a lot of work that needs to be done. And I really do think that if the administrative assistant can perform work for the superintendent, rather than having the, you know, the superintendent do his or her own day-to-day work, I do think you would accomplish a lot more, and I think you would get a good bang for your buck. So I think that's pretty much it. So I don't know if you have any questions on those areas.
Thank you. So any board members that has questions for Jeanne? Kathy? Oh, Ken?
First question is, is the director of HR position, is that town and board of education?
No, it's board of, typically, I understand the town has a director of HR. I think the big thing with the board of education is your certification. Now, there is an annual certification report, and, you know, I don't, I'm not sure when you were notified whether or not there are conflicts. But I have to tell you, all the years that I was doing it, I was very fortunate, we didn't have conflicts, because the HR person ensured that the certification matched the assignment. And it sounds like it would be easy, but there are a lot of certification requirements. And right now, it's really the secretary and I guess Heather that are doing that.
I mean, are you going to ask about the director of HR?
Yep.
Okay, well, I see the value in it, I just, I worry that enrollment's going down, it's not touching the students. I see the value in it, but I just wonder, from a top-down perspective, if...
So I would ask you, Ken, to think about the town. The town has how many employees?
100.
And they have a director of HR.
So is there opportunity at this decision point to have some synergies?
Well, when you switch over, I would suggest you try to engage that conversation. We have made attempts, we have had several conversations over the past six, seven years. So you may try again, but I think what Jeanne is saying, what I'm hearing, and why I'm not asking a lot of questions about it, is there are certification issues the town wouldn't need to know. They would not have to understand the teacher certifications. We, we could go into executive session, I could clarify more why I'm perfectly content with this job. I have different questions, so.
I want to think of a way to answer Mr. Burke's question without reaching confidentiality. Very recently, the board was served with a demand letter for salary, and I think that the HR director could have prevented that, and that's only one thing. Recently, I had three individuals that were disciplined. I typed all the letters, because they're highly confidential. I put them in the files, and I delivered the consequence to Heather so she can handle Evaluations. Everyone in the organization should have an annual evaluation, there should be checks and balances, and no one should slip through the cracks, unless they're out on leave for more than half the year. So I think there's room for improvement. And I don't think you can really be, do justice to two masters.
So I had sort of a comment or question on the HR position too, and I guess the way I look at it is, it feels to me like, although it's probably a significant expense, I see it as a real potential to avoid long-term expenses.
I would agree.
To me, probably in the first year, could pay for itself just by avoiding potential legal exposure or potential mistakes made. So I think personally, I feel like not having that position filled right now is probably what they would say, penny wise and pound foolish.
That has been my observation, September, October, November.
So I get the expense side of it, but I really do think if you want to have a long-term vision and you want to be smart, it's a position we need to fill.
I agree.
And I would agree that I think it does touch the students, because impacting the people that have direct contact with the students directly impacts the students. So I think having stability all throughout our organization and being intentional in our respect for the work that every person does is investing in our students.
And that's a great point, because I just thought of something. Everyone is fingerprinted, and when we get a hit back, you know, that there's something, if the person hasn't reported it, it could be grounds for dismissal, you know, and usually we get them, well, you know, you want to get that back within the first 90 days, and that information isn't shared with anyone but that HR person and that employee. So when you look at the way, you know, it's across several people now, that's not a very, that's the litigious part, because if an individual was aware that it was, you know, it's supposed to be very confidential.
Any other questions? Okay, Kathy.
Heather is going to talk about some of the other areas.
That's what I figured, I'm going to, okay.
I just don't want you to ask me one of the open-ended questions.
It's ready, but I know it's Heather.
I'm excited, too.
It's on here. In terms of the board clerk, I just want to make sure I understand exactly, I think you, is that on page 131, the 6,000?
Yes.
So I'm going to share a little bit of my history with this. We have interviewed for board clerks before and found several folks that were well overqualified, and they ended up declining because of that low pay. And so I have grave concerns that this is actually going to attract what we need. The person, we did have a person in the past that did a phenomenal job, and, you know, I just, I don't think this is going to cut what, what I know we do need, because, trust me, we do, we do need everything. I agree with everything you said, I just, having interviewed for this type of...
It's low, you know, I tried to make it, I think it's really important.
I do, too. I'm, I'm wondering...
I tried to make it, you know, reasonable is what I'm trying to say, but if that's not what the market would dare hear, then I think we have to consider that.
That's what I'm concerned with, because we did try and we couldn't, we got several people to interview, and then they declined, and I couldn't blame them. But, you know, I understood, they were, they were very well qualified. The other, the other piece I'm wondering, and I know this probably isn't going to appeal to you, but is there a way to combine that with the registrar, the secretary? I don't know what, whatever.
You certainly can try to do that, but then that means someone is away from that duty station.
I know.
Because you have to give, you know, and I know, you know, I've heard that the town does do that with their executive-type secretaries. Early in my tenure, we did that, too, but not having someone there for two or three hours during the day, whether it's the next day or whenever that, you know, you make an adjustment, then you're filling someone else in. So it's almost like do without, you know, you're doing without someone, because I'm not going to bring someone into my office when that's a confidential exempt position.
Got it.
You know?
Got it, yeah, yeah.
So you have to weigh all of that.
Different end sites, okay. All right. Let's see, it probably... My next questions, I think, are going to relate to what Heather has.
So Jeanne, do you have any wishes or anything else that you would like to see?
I really applaud all of the people that have presented, because they, they've come up with good things, you know, the teaching assistants, the security cameras, et cetera. They were good.
Excellent, thank you for all of the work that you've really invested in this.
It's really been everyone.
It's definitely a team effort.
It's been collaborative effort.
But you led the discussion, and I really, I think we all value how easy you've made it for us to understand as well, and I'm hoping that if people go online and go through these themselves, that they'll find it just as easy to understand. So Heather Mashad.
So thank you so much for preparing yourselves to sit through probably the most unmotivating section of the budget presentations, but I will do my best, because I am excited. If you don't mind, I'm going to try and summarize it, because I don't think that we had a big summary, and to try and put it into perspective for people, and I'll be as quick and painless as possible. So I did a five-year look back on the approved budgets here, and the percentage and the average that Avon has seen on the school side of things. And our average over five years is a 2.726% increase. That's really amazing. I will say, that's really amazing when you look at other districts and things of that nature. So cheers to you and the town. If you don't mind, I'm going to just kind of go over the percentage of the proposed budget increases and just things of that nature, you would just jump around in here if you want to know what page number. So page 31. All right, so this is always an interest point for most individuals in towns and parents and that sort of thing, because the school board budget, as you know, is the largest portion of any town budget, and they always want to know where we're spending our money. So clearly, we have been maintaining and hovering around 80% payroll and benefits. That's just where things sort of live here in Avon, and that's, that's about correct if you look across the state and the nation. You know, service-based industry, that's what we definitely could expect. Following up on that, the other trending items that really push the budget every year, your transportation, right, and then your tuitions. So that rounds out about 10% additionally on top of that, and then following up with the other items that I've listed here. Of course, I gave you a pie chart just in case you wanted to check it out in color like that. So that, that's really what we're looking at, and this is not changed year over year. If you look back at the last couple of years, this is very standard for just about any district. If you look at page 34, which is the budget drivers, it's under the budget driver section, I should, probably should have told you this section, my apologies. My apologies. Let's talk about how we got here. So I just told you salary and benefits is 80%. It's been 80%. That's what we can expect forever. The big contributing factor this year was the health insurance. I will tell you, five people looked at this. We sat down with the town and the insurance consultant from Milliman and we looked at the 12-month claims experience that Avon has been receiving from October of 2016 to October of 2017. Those claims are down to the point where we actually had a negative premium increase of 4.35%. Yes, we were all blown back in our chairs, to be quite honest. Like I said, we had it checked again and again because that just doesn't happen. So when we dove down into it, this has solely to do with the board's negotiations. That solely, that is moving all of these bargaining units into the HSA over the last several years. And of course, the large one that we moved two years ago now, the teachers. They're our largest unit. So now that they have matured in the plan, that's what we call it, matured, this is the experience that we're seeing.
That's great.
Now, is this a trend that we're going to continue to see? Jury's out and I'm not going to weigh in on it at all. But we all, we all sat there at the table and we agreed we're going to take the 4.35% reduction on the employer's side and we're going to pass it on to the employees. So that's tremendous. I mean, that is good news for everyone. Now, what did that allow us to do? That allowed this budget to come in that much lower. I tried to frame it a little bit for you in the summary saying, hey, when I originally was estimating budget figures, I estimate on the five-year trend increase for health insurance. It's 5.9% here, right? So when I estimated that, it was a lot higher. So the difference between the 4.35% negative and the 5.9% ended up being about 441,000 or so. That's a lot of funding. So that's really what enabled wonderful people like Jean Anne and Donna and all of those principals and whatnot to put together what they really believed is what this district needs to move forward.
Probably never after.
I hope it does happen.
I hope it does too.
Your trend is.
It's amazing, right? So that being said, there's a couple other items I'd like to highlight because I don't think that the board hears enough about them and you should be proud of them. So the first one is the pension. So the town of Avon has an old-fashioned pension system. Most towns do. This particular pension system is funded by the board side and then it's funded by the town side, associated with their relative employee base that are able to contribute and be active in that particular system. The board should be so proud because our funding of that pension system, I think I put it down here, 79.2% funded. That number, I'm sure that Mr. Burke could speak to that, is a very good funding basis as far as a pension system goes. And we are continuing to fund it at the actuarial valuation employer contribution and our active employees are continuing to fund it as they have to via payroll. So just to kind of give you a breakdown of how that pension really is functioning here. So right now, we have 134 active employees contributing to the pension from various bargaining units at various percentage levels. We have 43 separated prior employees, right? They could, they could have resigned, they could have retired, but they're vested, right? They're just not collecting yet. And then we have 37 retirees presently collecting from the pension system. So it is, it's active, right? So this is just some numbers that you can play within your head later. I'm sure that you, when you want to sleep, you could think about this sort of thing. I can give you the pension data. But anyway, this is wonderful and I think that you should really thank yourselves and thank the town for continuing to fund this pension. That being said, we sort of have a new, new on the board side, not new altogether in the concept, funding of post-retirement benefits, right? OPEB, you've heard me mention it a few times. Now, for whatever reason, the town was far more ahead of the board on this. I'm not sure what happened there, but either way, the board is on top of things because I love this stuff, to be quite frank. So the board this year, or I should say last year, we really sat down with the actuaries and we said, okay, what is it that you're looking to do and what data are you looking to compile for census to get us an OPEB number that's accurate that we can start funding? Now, what they're doing here is they're using the OPEB account to fund health benefits for retirees, not completely separate from pension benefits for retirees. And it's wise, right? We don't know where healthcare is going. So that being said, last year, because I started to do an analysis as to how the board was budgeting and funding its health insurance employer mandated contributions, I started breaking that out from what's current, right? What's retiring and what should be OPEB, right? So now we have a really great basis for funding OPEB and we'll be moving forward. You can see that I asked for a much larger sum in that OPEB line item this year. And you'll be seeing a transfer in the 1718 budget asking to move some of the funds into that OPEB line item. So fun facts about OPEB. Okay, so last two, I think I just touched upon, transportation and tuition. We can talk about those later. They have their own section or we can talk about them now, whatever you would like. Okay, I could keep going. So transportation, another huge win for the Board of Education. As you know, we have our transportation vendor, it's specialty transportation. We ended up doing a contract extension with them. And during those negotiations, the board was able to secure a funding increase over the next six years essentially, right, of the contract. So it flattened out the increase from jumping around a bit to this bizarre number of 1.774, I believe. Anyway, that's what it is. So if you end up looking at all of the transportation lines together, I estimated the current fleet that we're using right now because I know that we added two vehicles and we've increased one since last year in the whole nine yards. I used that same exact calculation. And then I just added the increase. It actually is down because we are decreasing a wheelchair van that we believe will not be necessary next year. And that's pretty much it for transportation. It's, it's pretty flat if you look at the whole line. So that's amazing. Last but not least, Kim was kind enough to touch on tuition. We did some estimates on tuition. Special education, interestingly enough, we used a trend analysis and that also accounted for increases in tuition. And this one, I agree, we should, we should watch, but I think that it was good to take, I'm going to call it a gamble. I'm going to call it a gamble. I think that, you know, if you look at the five-year trend on special education, I think it's possible that we could come in on budget. Do you know? No. Special education is a moving target all the time, but I think that this is reasonable and I think that it's a good idea in this case. So that being said, and then I looked at the magnet school tuitions. We reduced that a bit only because it seems our trend is, our students aren't going to as many magnet schools. So even though I increased the tuition on some of those magnet schools, I reduced the enrollment to them. So you'll see that change there for tuition as well. I think that that pretty much summarizes the, the big items in the budget. And I can save the revenue discussion for later or we don't have to talk about it at all.
Do any board members have questions?
Go ahead, Ken. No, I know you're first.
No, no, go ahead.
No, really, because you're going to ask it from your business perspective.
No, 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 go ahead. I'll go around.
All right. You answered, I mean, I had a lot of questions on health insurance when I was looking at that. I think you answered it all. I'm going to go with that you did. The workers' comp increase? Could you explain a little about history? Doesn't look like it's there, so I was curious. Page 134.
Thank you. Yes, absolutely. This is another discussion that I've been pretty active with the town. This is the HR director at the town oversees the workers' comp there. And I've been highly interested in the other insurance that we're required to carry here in district and the split that we share with the town of Avon because it just didn't really make a whole lot of sense. A lot of it seemed to just be the way it's always been. So let's talk about what is a better split? What really is the split? What, what is the usage, things of that nature? So workers' compensation came up. And when we looked at the, we used five years again. We looked at the five-year trend with the consultant. You know, the, the board was really underfunding its portion, right? For the amount of workers' compensation claims that we have in comparison with the town. Now, some years they have more, some years we have more. Some years theirs are more expensive, even though they might be less, right? Some years, either way, what we came to the conclusion of was it really needs to be a 50-50 split. Over a five-year period, that's what it came down to. We really need to contribute town 50%, board 50% to workers' compensation insurance coverage.
Okay, so we don't have access to the town data. So that's why when I was looking for the history, I didn't see it.
Correct. We don't have access to that. But that's where that came from and I would appreciate if the board would consider doing something like that.
Okay. So you clarified. All right, I don't know if this is under you or where it is, but there, at page 135, I have contracted services, world languages. Trying to understand that significant increase.
I can take that.
So.
Yep. So the contracted services for world language was created when the district created an agreement with CCSU and the Confucius Institute for the option of having these Chinese teachers in districts. They are not on our payroll. We do pay CCSU for that opportunity. The reason why the large jump is because when the budget was presented last year, it was presented based on three still. Apparently, we needed four. So I had to make that work in that first transfer that you saw this year in 1718. Yes. Well, next year, we're going to need five, right? To really get through what we need, even though we're using five now technically. I think we're using five right now.
We have five right now.
We had to, right, they can't split buildings apparently, right? They have to be located, is that?
It's how their visas are written. And one was written for high school, one middle school. And then we split the other ones through elementary. So we have a little more flexibility there because Thompsonbrook is coming on and we had a bit of a bubble at Pine Grove. So it's all how the visas are written.
So we have five, one for each building?
So we'll have five next year also.
So that's why the significant increase.
And to clarify that, we pay a certain percentage. Is that about, how much is that? So we clarify?
Yep. So it's on their step, right? So some of them are maybe a master's three now, some of them are a master's one. And we pay one-third of it.
We pay one-third. They pay the other two-thirds. So just wanted to clarify that for those.
And I know there's been questions regarding certification. They are certified. And in terms of evaluation, they fall under the same teacher evaluation program as every other teacher in the district that is certified. And then the Confucius Institute also does their own observations and evaluation.
Okay, thank you. All right, on that same page, legal and consulting fees district-wide went up quite a bit.
So that's where I put the $30,000 for the strategic planning consultant.
Okay.
Right. And I also put some additional funding for upcoming teacher negotiations, knowing that that might eat up some legal fees. And some additional funding for what the new superintendent might need to collect for data, such as futures reports. Things that I know that the district has contracted in the past just to gather relevant current data for whatever vision that they're looking to build. I did put in funding for all of those types of items so that they had something to work with.
Thank you. And one other out of this section, on page 139, there's miscellaneous. I don't like that word. Board of Ed and it's going up. It looks like it's meeting the historical increase, but just curious as to why?
I forgot to speak to it.
Okay.
Would you like to?
I'm trying to find my notes on that. Well, that was the board. Yes, let Heather, we talked about it today and I left that sticky note somewhere else. I know some of it, but not all of it.
So this line has been here and there has definitely been one like it in all of your past chart of accounts. This miscellaneous expenditures of the Board of Education is meant to capture anything that has to do with this group of nine essentially. Oh, there they are, perfect.
I was on the wrong page.
So oddly enough, it's traditionally been underfunded. I couldn't even speak to why.
Yeah, I could see that, but I.
And we clearly spend definitely all day long, 20, 25, $27,000 a year. And they're for valid reasons. CAVE is in there, right? Your membership fee to that, the online membership fee to view your policies, our policies. Things of celebratory nature, like for instance, getting the items for board members that might be leaving or the students or things.
Achievement, okay.
Exactly.
Okay.
Yep.
Recognition, student recognition, Avon Day booth, the rental for the Avon Day booth. And also the hiring committees and negotiations. You know, when we stayed late for negotiations, we had something to eat and it comes out of that account.
Thank you. I just always like to explain to folks to understand that we're not just miscellaneous.
And I apologize because we went through all of this today and like was on the wrong page. You said 134 before I was on that page or 138.
That's it for now, I'll come back.
So then, actually, building off of Kathy, I know the workers' comp now is 50-50, which is great, I guess. For the Board of Ed, I know we've had increases in insurance before for that. Does that mean we get to select now who the insurer should be or?
No, I'm pretty sure that that's still going to be overseen by the town of Avon, but I think that the conversations will be all of us at the table, which would be great.
Okay. Is there, is there a chance that it will be like 75-25 at some point in time?
Well, depending on our comp claims, sure.
Okay.
Risk management can help anything. It really can.
OPEB also, I love the contribution for 100K. I think it's a smart move. I was just looking at the 2015, this is when we refinanced our debt, for the annual required contribution for the Board of Ed, OPEB, it was over a million. So is 600,000 really the true annual contribution required?
Yes, it is, yep.
What's the funding level?
I haven't even gotten it yet because they didn't have a calculated funding level for the board because we hadn't been funding it.
Okay.
So now we have it funded and I'll be able to report to you at the end of the year.
Okay. That would be my only thing is why not more? Why not more to it to kind of like?
You can take care of that and I'm here on the Board of Ed.
Yeah. So.
Just don't take anything away. Did you speak into the microphone?
So I appreciate everything you're really doing. Good job.
I have one question.
All right, Jason.
The one thing that stuck out to me, you spoke to it a little bit, the transportation contract, the fact that the increases have been, I guess, negotiated to be steady over the course of the rest of the contract. And it seems like a favorable percentage. What stuck out to me was the length of the contract. There's six years left on it. It just, it seems like a long time to me. Was the length part of the reason that we got the better raise at what it went into the decision-making?
It was a contract extension. So what you see is an addendum to the initial contract. And yes, the negotiation leverage was extending the contract out.
So just for my own frame of reference, what was remaining on the contract? What was added to it, if you know off the top of your head?
We renegotiated, not this past, maybe it was this past winter and then it came in front of the Board of Education in January. And I believe the new contract was signed in February. And that would have put two more years on it.
So it added. So it added two years to it?
Just a regular contract, and this extended five out.
Okay. All right, thanks.
Mm-hmm. Okay, Kathy?
Just a couple minor ones in the transportation on page 165. I just want to make sure that, it looks like there's a, I know it's slight, I'm not really looking at the dollar, I'm thinking of the question, the bigger question. It looks like internship program costs going down, I just want to make sure that the internship program has helped it, is not being, no detriment to that, rather that just maybe there's a need that's not there anymore.
Correct. So what we ended up doing with the internship program is internally, because we have those two drivers. We've been trying to route the interns on a more organized schedule so that we can use our internal drivers during the day and maybe in the afternoon versus actually calling a cab, or, you know, getting a van from specialty, or things of that nature. So that's how we've been able to get around that expenditure a little bit, but we definitely still need something in there because of how the internships sort of fall out, what times of day, things of that nature.
Okay. And then the magnet school transportation?
Mm-hmm.
Bigger increase than I guess I thought.
Yep.
Noted somewhere else, so I wasn't sure about that.
That was an adjustment because of the transportation requirements this year that we had to make. We actually had to add a type two, we had to add a van, and the magnet school, I believe, has its own type one bus, and that happened last year. So the increase is correct, based on what's happening now.
Thank you very much.
You're welcome.
On page 165, Kathy, just alerted me to it. Do we transport preschool students now out by bus? I wasn't aware of that.
Yeah, I can answer that. Thank you. It's students who have IEPs, so it's special transportation.
Perfect. Thank you. Did you have a question, Jay? Anyone else? All right, well, Heather, do you have any wishes? Or Heather, do you have any wishes that you would like to add into this budget?
No, I got to talk about OPEV intentions, so I'm going, thanks.
All right. Excellent.
You kept her happy.
Excellent. So, did you want to?
Yes.
Okay, so we're going to move to revenues then?
Page 174.
It's under financials.
Yeah, page 174.
Okay, so revenues, as you know, we've talked about this for the last two years, we've been reducing our revenues for a multitude of reasons. Whether it is that we're simply not collecting the same amount of athletic gate receipts as what was projected, even though we never really collected that level of gate receipts, to frankly just state-of-Connecticut-type funding, as Donna mentioned, team program not being funded at all anymore. So in an effort to remain conservative, it's really important not to overbudget on the revenue side. I do know that that is detrimental to the town, and we're putting together the full budget. I've been a little bit more conservative than normal. For instance, the Early Beginnings Grant, that is part of the Open Choice Program. That is additional funding that pre-K and kindergarten students have traditionally received as sort of an incentive to take those younger children in a full-day program. So it's $4,500 per child, and it comes in this Early Beginnings Grant, right, but it is hooked to the Open Choice Program. There has been whispers and discussion about that going away, because really, at this point, most of the Open Choice districts are very established, right? We have established relationships with Open Choice, and we're taking children, you know, that young anyhow. So just to be conservative, I'm not budgeting for that, and I wouldn't expect to pass that on to the town. Open Choice, just in general, I'm maintaining that 120 seats we're expecting to fill. Again, to be conservative, it is at the 3% of our student population rate, which is at $6,000 per child, so that's where we're coming up with that $720,000, which is flat from the year prior. The changes in employee dental, employee life contributions, that is something that I had to discuss with the town, and we had a discussion last year. It would seem that when we were reporting the employee dental and life revenue to you and to them, we were including all the revenue, which included retirees. So now that we have new reporting requirements through the town and things of that nature, I've had to pull out that retiree portion. So it's not reported on here because we're not quite sure where we're going to put it quite yet. But anyway, that's the difference there. It was the retiree portion of people electing dental and life insurance. Let's see, what else down here? And I think that pretty much rounds it out, other than the special ed tuition reimbursement. So again, this is my conservative estimate. The city of Hartford has been struggling, as we all know, and we bill the city of Hartford back for special education-related services for open-choice students. Those billings have been reduced over the last couple years because the city of Hartford is now leveraging the net of what we get from the per-student tuition, right, that open choice, whether it's $6,000 per student or $8,000, right? And then over and above, if the services fall over that eight or $6,000, then we can start billing Hartford. Okay. So that reduced the availability of us to receive that revenue. And again, because of the struggles that Hartford has had, we're just trying to dial back a little bit on what we think we're going to receive in a timely basis. That's my estimate.
So my biggest question, I guess, is, sorry, I understand, and I guessed at what you were going to say, because the calculations don't come to the numbers it should be. So if money does come in, it goes to the town, how would we access that funding, or would we and can we?
We may ask for supplemental appropriation. Technically speaking, the legislation doesn't speak like it does for the open-choice reimbursement and for excess cost, that it has to go to educational expenses.
So if extra comes, because the open choice, we're leaving 328,000, 328,000, if that comes in, it would come to us?
Only on the open choice and early beginnings. We can ask, and it has to come to us.
Because that's about, this is quite almost $400,000, so, all right, that, I understand your logic, I get it, and as long as, I know we have ability to get it, it makes me feel better.
Board members? Does that conclude the meeting, then?
Last time we had public-
Right, but I mean, as far as-
Yeah, I think so, unless there's anything, I would just ask if they had anything else that they wanted to say.
Thank you.
Thank you all.
All right. Well, thank you very much. So we do have a spot for communication from board members, if anybody would like to share something?
Thank you. Thank you for all the work.
Thank you all, it's great.
Yes, thank you for making this easy for us as well. Communications from the public. Would you like to comment on anything after having listened in?
I would.
Please come forward to the microphone and tell us your name. You might have to turn it on, I'm not sure.
Yeah, hi, I'm Kenna Daly, and I've been a resident Avon for over 30 years, and my kids all went to school here, and they're all very successful, so I have no, you know, problems. And everything that was presented tonight sounded very reasonable, very measured, and I'm glad to hear it, and I appreciated the detail on, a lot of the specifics on the education part of it. But I do have concerns as a taxpayer, and as I've seen the taxes go up significantly in Avon, but particularly with the background of what's going on in the state. I think we have to be very prudent going forward in how much we can, you know, keep adding on to the taxpayers in Avon. So I like the idea, and I hear it, for example, the Director of Human Resources for, you know, the education side of things, but the other side of me says, well, why can't we combine it? So I'd like a little more detail on what the obstacle would be combining a Director of Human Resources that does both the town and the education side of it. So that was one question I had. Another question I had was on the health insurance, I think, Heather, you said. We saved, because of the low claims rate, it sounds like, saved about $441,000. Where was that savings going? That's another question. I'd like to understand a little bit more about the pension for the educators, and if I could get a, where I can get a copy of that so I could actually take a look at it and read it. But something that, when we were talking about the Director of Human Resources, it said that the education side has 470 employees, but then when we were talking about the pension, we said only 134 employees contribute to the pension, so that's a big gap, and I don't know whether-
Teachers fund their own pension. The town doesn't fund the teachers' pension, and that's really throughout the state. The Connecticut Teacher Retirement Board, the teachers fund their own pension. Right now, it's 7.25% that comes out of their salary, if you don't mind me answering this.
Yeah, sure.
And as of, in January, it's going up to 8.25%. So the town doesn't fund, nor does any other town in the state of Connecticut fund teachers' pension.
Right, but if it comes, okay, never mind, there's another question, if it comes back to the towns, as Malloy had proposed.
Well, that's a separation issue. The state has not funded what they should have.
Right.
And so they wanted to try-
Right, 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 to put it on-
That's a whole different issue.
Right, right, right. Let's not go to that level, because that would be too complex right now. Okay, so that-
130 people are just the non-certified people.
Okay, all right, that's-
Secretaries, custodians, paraprofessionals.
Okay, that is the difference between the numbers.
Okay.
And then the workers' comp, again, if we have, or if the education side has 470 and the town has 100 and 100, or whatever it was, you negotiated a 50-50 split on the workers' comp?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Okay, so back to the HR question, I guess.
Well, you know, I think that's an interesting question, and I certainly can't answer it. I don't know if the town HR person is full-time.
Yeah.
So let's just look at this. You have a town with 100 employees roughly, who has a full-time person, you have a Board of Education with 470 that has it spread across at least three people, but really more, you know, when you consider the principals.
Well, I'm looking at it from an efficiency standpoint, that a Director of HR with perhaps an assistant could handle the 500 and so employees. It does sound inefficient to have one HR director for 100 employees, that sounds-
Yeah, I guess, and I don't mean to be flippant about this, but I think that's a question that needs to be posed to the town, and certainly, when I meet with the town manager, and should that come up, I will certainly, you know, ask questions. But I don't know that I can answer what the HR director for the town does, because I really don't know enough about it. I'm not trying to be flippant, I just-
No, but I guess I was going from the other side, that if the board wants something additional, such as this, that working with the town side to kind of cultivate those efficiencies and share-
I'd like to share that. We have asked-
You said that.
We have asked the town several times-
I do want to ask that, the town itself, yeah.
To please do certain items that were mentioned in a matrix study that was done by a health consultant many years ago. When I came on, it was, you know, eight years ago, it was an older report that was being studied, and certain suggestions were made, and the Board of Ed reached out and made several requests to consolidate certain areas, several areas, and it was declined. So it really, at this juncture, it really is best to go through to the town and ask the town. I would encourage, greatly encourage, I've tried to encourage that along the years.
Okay.
And we stopped even looking at the matrix study. The town stopped that whole process of looking at it and considering further improvements.
And then I guess last for Heather, for you, for the $441,000 in savings, where did you say that was going?
So the $441,000 in savings was, just to recognize that when I had originally put together the budget, I had used a placeholder, a 5.9% increase, right? So the difference between the 5.9% increase and what it actually came in at was this $441,000 number, right? So it wasn't this huge savings that we would have seen from budget to budget per se. But what happened was, we were able to fund OPEV, right? I moved that into the OPEV line, which is along the same vein, which is amazing. We were able to make sure that our pension matched the reduction in interest assumption. We've been reducing it slowly to be conservative, so that, if you look at the pension line, that line was increased again this year, and so that savings assisted in offsetting that per se.
That is extremely positive. It is not something you would hear from across the board from other districts and towns.
I think that's it.
Okay, thank you, Mrs. Alley.
Thank you.
Mr. Kavanaugh? Not Kavanaugh, Mr. Fleischmann, I apologize. Okay. So I guess I ask for a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
All in favor?
Aye.
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 Unanimously adjourned at 9:06.